We'll call the November 5th City Council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, will you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day please, sir?
Our fathers, once again, would come before your presence. Thankful for this opportunity to serve as a citizen. May I say our father bless upon this meeting and all those of the guilty here today. Continue to bless us, lead us in guidance, oh Father Lord, that we share faith in you. We please and accept you by your sight in thy son Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day, on November 5th, 1941, the combined Japanese fleet received TOPSEC order number one. In just over a month's time, Pearl Harbor is to be bombed along with Malaysia, known as the Dutch Indies and the Philippines. Tokyo delivered the order to all permanent fleet commanders that not only the United States and its protectorate, and its protectorate, the Philippines, but British and Dutch colonies in the Pacific were to be attacked. War was going to be declared on the west. Fact of the day.
All right, welcome to this public meeting of the City Council of the city of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you asked to address this council this afternoon, please make sure that you fill out a card with your contact information and present it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization of any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warning, including warning for trespassing. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from council chambers. All right, Susan?
Need to arrange people by height. Last week, we had a wonderful brownfield meeting. It was fantastic. Had it at the Church of the Holy Spirit. They have an 1886 chapel there that actually sat in this place, right here in 1886. It was built here and it was moved over there after it was too noisy on this corner by 1890, I believe it was. They couldn't hold services with the doors open. The stained glass windows were shipped here. They were handmade in England and shipped here and they do offer tours if you want. The speakers were absolutely fantastic. We had them from the state of Florida DEP Brownfields. We had them from Orange County Brownfields and from the Orange Extension Office from the University of Florida. And Commissioner Velazquez was there. And we actually had several people that are going to be turning over brownfields. One owns some potential brownfield areas here in Apopka. And we had women from the League of Women's Voters present. I think we had about five people from there. And people from all over the county came. It was exciting and a lot of communication going on. So we are going to be having some in the future. One concern though I have about the raises of the meter tampering fee and potential raise in fees that's going to be coming up is my concern for cutting off water. I know it's statutorily allowed at the state to cut off water. I feel that yes, if there are squatters and there's squatters laws about cutting off water. Yes, squatters should not have access to water. They shouldn't be there. They should probably be arrested for squatting, kicked out, removed. But when it comes to people having access to water that own the property, they should have consequences, yes, financial. They should have penalties, all types of penalties. But personally, I feel we need to come up with some way to get them water. That's a God-given right to me is water. And I sit and talk with people every morning that if we raise that are living outside the city limits, they're forced to get electricity or forced to get water in sewer from the city of Apopka. And one now, he's 80 years old, he bought this property and now he's going to pay at least $6,000 now to get water to his property. And it's going to cost a whole lot more when the rates go up.
Albert McKB, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Good afternoon, commissioners, good afternoon, mayor. This afternoon, I'm looking for some clarification. Several meetings ago, Commissioner Nesta requested clarification on the city's ability to provide some critical, critical infrastructure, specifically sewage. And at that time, Public Works said there wasn't a problem with sewage. Subsequently, I'm led to believe that public records will show that there was a letter put out to a city resident that stated there were some problems with sewage. That we had reached almost a level of critical capacity on one occasion and that wasn't going to be able for that developer to continue with their planning. Apparently, that development was subsequently stopped. So my question is this, what changed in a matter of four or five weeks where Public Works tells us there's no problem with critical infrastructure and particularly there's nothing problematic about sewage? First of all, we have one facility just now that processes sewage. It has two lines. I think it's an east and a west. One is capable of providing 3 million gallons of processing, the other is 5 million. But it's my understanding that the 3 million gallons has been inoperable for some considerable length of time because of the nitrogen content levels that the city could not meet FDEP standards. That means we have 5 million gallons, is it five? Yeah, 5 million gallons daily capacity for sewage. So can the city confirm to me today that they have or have not approached Orange County to use some of their excess capacity? If we are going to arrange to use some of Orange County's excess capacity, I believe possibly 2 billion gallons a day was the figures that were put about, will this be likely to cause rate increases in the sewage over a period of time? If it's not, what are we going to do about sewage capacities? Because in my discussions with the number of developers who have large-scale development plans going on, they're concerned that the city won't be able to meet their obligations. If the city doesn't meet their obligations, what happens if we can't issue certificates of occupancy? These developments, one development may have spent already tens of millions of dollars on planning along with other developers in the Kelly Park Road. We have concerns that if the development has been passed, if we don't have the sewage capacity, we're not going to be able to allow these people to progress.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. As promised, positive things champ, is our new sanitation person. Like her predecessors, does a great job, user-friendly, takes care of business. I also want to compliment the city on identified earlier this week, or maybe the end of last week, sidewalk concerns with mold buildup in the upper fields at Northwest Recreation Complex. My wife said they were pressure washing it today. With regard to SNAP funding, the question's there, I think you should look at your discretionary funds. There's something you can move toward lows and fishes to help the people that need food in this community. On April 16th of this year, you adopted two resolutions funding $3 million in roadwork in Emerson Park. Basically a loan that they have to pay back in 15 years. I can bring you 2.4 million, or over $2 million in revenue by simply foreclosing on the 2 million plus for the Rock Springs Ridge Golf Course. Then the city can engage in agreement with Rock Springs Ridge Homeowners Association for a lease purchase that will net the city $480,000 a year or 2.4 million dollars over the next five years. A win-win for the community, saving billions of dollars for the purchase and a win for the city coming up with 2.4 million dollars. This is yours. This is yours. I reported over a year ago, sections that need to be replaced on Jason Dwellie Parkway. They did what my grandmother called a lick and a prayer, a couple little areas done, a bunch of areas marked and nothing else done. I followed up again in August of this year. And what happens? October 10th, I have a fall because of one of the raised sections of sidewalk. I go down, broke my clavicle. You own this. Two days later, overtime, people putting out cones that looked like the Fourth of July up and down Jason Dwellie. Work commenced the next week, it was completed on the 31st. Over 60 sections of sidewalk were replaced. Over a dozen leveled, 3 ADA compliant intersections were put in. At what cost? Again, it's a reactive versus proactive approach the city takes. Personally impact, I'm our maintenance man. I do lawn tile, I got suspended projects, some work's being put off, some work my wife is doing, and some work I had to hire out. I missed four of my granddaughter's soccer matches. I missed Biketoberfest, first time I missed it in 11 years, various city events. Doctor says I'm recuperating great, don't need surgery at this point with any luck. Within the next few months, I'll be able to be functional again. Prob combination of fit, luck, and the good Lord looking out for me. This injury is a reminder for me of all the challenges many people face every day. Mine's a temporary injury. Mayor and Commissioners, this fall again exposes your negligent practices, your failure to properly budget, your failure to fill vacant positions, the fact that city employees are wearing multiple hats, your failure to assign, follow-up, hold staff accountable. I'm entitled to a little extra time here today. Lack of infrastructure. Citizens, it's your responsibility to report things. If you see something, say something. If someone other than me would have pointed out what's happened on rocks on Jason Dwellie, maybe it would have been done instead of like, well, hell, it's just Rod Olson. What does that mean? We need to speak up. Use C Click Fix in the process. While on C Click Fix, let me cover this. You gonna let me finish or not?
No, you're good. You've got three and a half minutes, Eric. Thank you.
Yeah, we got three and a half minutes, thank you, mayor. The rest of this will be addressed. I'm hoping to avoid a lawsuit with the city and if you want to cut me off, you're welcome.
Dr. Jim Moyer.
Dr. Jim Moyer here. First, I want to trust my hat, okay? The US Marine Corps turns 250 years old next Monday, the date before Veterans Day and we join our older brothers, the US Army that turned 250 on June 14th and the US Navy that turned 250 on October 13th. Taking off my hat, separation of duties. I'm elected Orange Soil and Water Conservation District to Supervisor. We're having a fundraiser in Acoe, basically right down Acoe-Apopka Road on Friday from 3 to 5. I encourage everyone to attend. Pop in, pop out, whatever you want. The owner of the Breakfast Club of Acoe is an amazing young man. He owns two businesses. The Breakfast Club of Acoe is owned for four years and he's 25 years old as of November 1st. He also owns another business. This will be a rare opportunity to meet Chris because he's at his other business most of the time. If it's slow and if he's at the Breakfast Club, he's working harder than anybody in the back. But he will be available Friday. I encourage everyone to attend. Also, I'd like to point out that I come here to these meetings to be a resource for Apopka. For example, this morning, I'm part of the Orange Agricultural Committee. If there's any needs or anything that Apopka wants me to convey to the Orange County Ag Committee, please let me know. If there's any way I can help at all, that's why I'm doing this as an elected volunteer. For example, last night I spoke at Lockhart. Prior in my preparation, I found out that there was a vacancy doing water sampling on Lake Lockhart and I ultimately connected the person with the Florida Lake Watch to a potential volunteer in Lakehart. So again, I'm here to help. I appreciate everything you do. I love the city of Apopka and my city of Acoe. If at all possible and you can put this flyer on your website, I would greatly appreciate. Acoe has already done so. Thank you so much and God bless you all.
Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids, Apopka, Florida. I am here today to announce that we are doing our annual Christmas event. This year, we partnered with Domino's. It's called a clause for celebration. We know everyone's going through something or the other. So this is a way of giving back to the community. Everything is absolutely free. However, we do ask that families, in order for us to control the headcount, we are catering for 100 kids. Families have to register in advance. On the screen, if you do a screenshot, that QR code, you can scan it for the families to register, kids ages up to 13 years old. To promote Apopka, we asking that families who register must live or attend school in Apopka. It's an outdoor event at First Methodist Church in Apopka. We also, Domino's is going to be doing a surprise special gift to a family. As part of bringing Apopka together, we are offering a free local business promo. So any businesses located in Apopka, if you have any promotional items that can be used as stocking stuffs to promote your business, please get in touch with us and we will put your stuff in in the stockings to give to the families. We're going to be having free food. Thanks, we do have an anonymous donor who is going to cover the toys for 100 kids. So each child will get a free toy gift wrap. We're going to have face painting and also they're going to get to do pictures with Santa. If you have any questions, please call us. The phone number is there, 407-883-5585. This event is going to be on December 28th, 2025. Thank you everyone for your time and have a happy Thanksgiving if we do not see you again. Thank you.
Leroy Bell of Apopka. Two things right quick before I get to what I want to speak about. One, I seen someone speak, I think it was last meeting, about people coming up that don't live in South Apopka, always talking about annexation. Commissioner Smith and I don't live in South Apopka, but we wanted to see South Apopka annex. We have conveyed that. And there have been workshops saying, put it on the agenda and let the people vote on it. And I'm sick and tired of these sand boggers coming up here, stuck with this administration, talking about they don't want South Apopka annexed. South Apopka don't belong to them. So they need to get somewhere and sit down. Secondly, I seen last meeting where two people come from the county with their Abbott and Costello slapstick comedy. One want to be the mayor of Apopka. People, pay attention. These people is campaigning off of your damn. What I came to speak about is South Apopka is being shaken down by the water department. Several people have received these outlandish water bills. And we want to know, what rate are they being charged with? They've been charged with the last rate or this new rate that you didn't pose? If you go down there, the water treatment sewer plant, you can't even go on the outside because the stench down there. And if you remember, Mr. Cooper came in about the lip plant up on, I think that's Bradshaw. And the next day, the city administration had 20 trucks out there taking care. No, I don't live in South Apopka, but we do have property in South Apopka. I have family in South Apopka. I have friends in South Apopka. I have a godmother in South Apopka. And last, this administration need to do better about when people did reckless requests about this water. There's been reckless requests about the water and no one, no one have received anything. Come on and start serving the people and stop serving yourself. I would like for a change that the people that live in South Apopka get their head out of the back pocket of this mail and put it with the citizens.
First, I want to just thank the mayor and commissioners for what you do in consideration of the unhoused and the needing in the community. With the SNAP program that has been reduced Tuesday, yesterday, I asked the residents, the unhoused residents, how many of them are on SNAP? Everybody's hand was up. So with the reduction or the change with the SNAP program or whatever's going in limbo with that, there's going to be an overwhelming need for things to be given or to be purchased. You know, I ride around with B Ferroni in the back of my car all the time and things like that. So any way that you can support any organization, whether they're 501(c)(3) or not, any way you can support would be very much appreciated by not just me, but the community itself. Next, I'd like to get asked for the next meeting if we can get an update on the sleeper bus publicly. That would be something that would be interesting, the unhoused would be interested in. And then next, next week's weather projections are supposed to be in the 40s and high 30s. So if we could get ahead of the game so I can know exactly where we're going to commence with the warming shelters if possible, that would be great. And then fifth, on November 23rd, at Just Like Mamas, we will be having our Thanksgiving meal. So if you can, just take a few minutes just to come in and just be present with them, with us as we have our Thanksgiving dinner, a celebration with them. And lastly, I'm going to take the rest of time to remember April, Michelle Mulligan. She is the young lady that got hit on the 441 in front of First Baptist Church. She's a young lady there. So I just want to take the rest of time just to be silent, just to remember her at that time. Thank you and God bless.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, looking for a motion, any changes to the minutes? Not look for a motion to approve the minutes from October 15th?
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Rodney, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, do have a couple here in public hearings. We're requesting to move item number four, ordinance number 3131, second reading. Small-scale feature land use amendment for 1920 Sheeler Avenue up to just before item number two, which is ordinance number 3123, second reading of zoning, changes zoning for 1920 Sheeler. That's the appropriate order they need to go for approval.
So number four goes before number?
Four will go right after number one, before number two.
Got you.
Okay.
And then also the applicant for item number seven, ordinance number 31. And then also the applicant for item number seven, ordinance number thirty one twenty one, first reading, small scale future land use amendment for one five five MA Board Street is requesting a continuance to November nineteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. And then have an update on the second reading for ordinance number thirty one thirty charter amendments. The second reading has been advertised and placed on the November nineteenth regular city council meeting. It's being done to ensure the second reading also occurred on an evening council meeting, uh which may be easier for residents who uh work during the days to attend and and be part of that second reading. Just a reminder, the uh final deadline for the city to submit uh election materials to Orange County Supervisor Elections uh for the March municipal election date is January fifth, twenty twenty six. So we're still in, in the time limit there.
Thank you, Radley. Alright, next up, we got a proclamation. Boy, Victoria, how long we been doing this?
About twenty years.
So Victoria Laney is here to uh accept our proclamation and it's about the family and weak of the family. And so let me just read the proclamation. And it states, whereas the family is the foundation of the city of Apopka, it is the family that instills pride and a sense of community in our city. And whereas Apopka is blessed with a multitude of families, the essential part of the cultural, social and spiritual fabric. And whereas strong families are the center of strong communities, and we should take time to honor the importance of families and recognize the special connections that support and strengthen them throughout the year. And whereas during the celebration of family, we will also remember and pray for the families of our men and women serving in the military. And whereas by strengthening the family unit, our community, cities and nation will be stronger for future generations. This year's theme is families support each other. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, mayor of the city of Apopka, by virtue of the authority vested in me, uh city of Apopka do hereby proclaim November first through November eighth, two thousand twenty five to be weak of the family. Victoria, you wanna say if you were, then we'll get a picture with you.
Thank you so much. That's the final proclamation and it is so beautiful. I love the way you included the veterans. And um I don't usually um hear the public comments, so that was so interesting. You're, all my brothers and sisters were all families and families sometimes argue, but in the end, we all love each other and want, want what's best. And so thank you for uh issuing the proclamation and for the opportunity for me to be here.
Thank you, Victoria. Alright, we've got seven consent agenda items. Does anybody from the public or from the diocese need to pull any of those items? If not, look for a motion to approve the seven consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, street closure for the Puddin' Place Festival. And I hope you have some definition of what that means, because I think we're all, acquiring minds want to know their.
I still wanna know. I've been researching. Um so Cindy Edwards, interim Parks and Recreation Director, I have two road closures. Um the first is an event street closure is requested in the special event permit application uh by Strata Entertainment for the Puddin' Place Festival. The event requested is November seventh, twenty twenty five. The requested street closure includes East Station Street from South Park Avenue to Sixth Street. The street closure will begin at three PM on November seventh and reopen at nine thirty PM the same evening. Event times are provided uh between five and nine PM. The special event permit application has been reviewed by staff, including police and fire, and has been recommended for approval. Uh DRC unanimously recommended approval at their October twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting, and this is being brought to you all for a final approval. Um I do have an update, Commissioner. I have uh updated BTR from them, so we're good on that. And both of these road closures have gone through roll call.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that. That was the question I had was updated BTR and then making sure that police were uh involved in some capacity for safety. So thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Cindy?
No.
On this one? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? I just wanna yeah commence Cindy and the team for putting this together and and I hope that we can work collectively with the Fifth Street Market to really make this, you know, uh because that's obviously it's the next street over, so it'd be nice to kind of, you know, obviously the synergies with two events. You know, hopefully everybody gets to to be a part of both events. So if you make sure that, I know that we just lost um Kelly, but you know, get with Kelly and and the IT team and let's try to make somehow weave those two together. Because I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to, to do multiple things uh downtown.
Absolutely. And our, I'm sorry, go ahead. You have to, I got another one.
Okay, well, we got, we got, um so anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve or authorize the event street closure for Puddin' Place Festival.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, authorization for event street closure for Pines of Wakava.
Okay, an event uh street closure is requested in the special event permit application submitted by Pines of Wakava HOA for a holiday fest. The event requested is December sixth, twenty twenty five. The street closure includes Wakava Pines Boulevard from Falcon Crest Boulevard to Wyndham Pine Drive. The street closure would begin at nine AM on December twenties, uh excuse me, December sixth, twenty twenty five and reopen at three PM the same day. Event times are provided as ten AM to two PM. Uh the special event permit application has been reviewed by staff, including police and the fire, and is recommended for approval. DRC unanimously recommended approval of the special event permit application along with the proposed street closures at their October twenty second meeting and is being brought to you for final approval.
Any questions for Cindy? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to authorize the event street closure for the Pines of Wakava HOA Holiday Fest.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, interlocal agreement with Central Florida Expressway, CFX, Binion Road, State Road four twenty nine half interchange. Jean.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. Um mayor and council members, this item is, let's see here. This item is the interlocal agreement between the city of Apopka and the Central Florida Expressway Authority for the State Road four twenty nine and Binion Road half interchange project. It uh creates a northbound on-ramp and southbound off-ramp at Binion Road, providing improved access to Southwest Apopka. It'll also reduce travel pressure on existing interchanges like the Hakoya Apopka Road and improve network efficiency for that region. The interchange has been a long-term city priority and represents a strong partnership between Apopka and CFX to address regional mobility and local access. This aerial gives a sense of where the project is located is the connection point between Binion Road and State Road four twenty nine. Now, before we move on to the provisions of the agreement, I'd like to give a quick summary of how we got here. In twenty twenty one, city council first heard the presentation by then Transportation Coordinator Pam Richmond. You may remember her regarding a Binion Road connection to State Road four twenty nine. In twenty twenty two, CFX initiated a project development and environment PDNE study to analyze environmental traffic and design feasibility. And during that PDNE and design phases, CFX hosted community meetings, provided public notices and coordinated with adjacent property owners. The city and CFX continue to collaborate to ensure that access management, safety and noise mitigation are fully addressed during the design phase. In late twenty twenty four, the city executed an interlocal agreement with Orange County to transfer a portion of Binion Road right of way to Apopka, ensuring local control. So with these milestones, these milestones, milestones represent three years of consistent coordination to align local and regional mobility priorities and will significantly enhance connectivity for residents, commuters and future development within the southwest road area. And so here's an overview of the uh key components of the project. The northbound on-ramp and southbound off-ramp connecting Binion Road to s- to State Road four twenty nine. This is the concept layout from CFX's preliminary design. It shows a northbound ramp providing direct access to State Road four twenty nine while the southbound ramp provides a safe and efficient return route into Apopka. There's also the realignment of Boy Scout Road to intersect Binion Road through a new roundabout. A foundage road is included in order to maintain access to existing Boy Scout Road properties. Um, a sidewalk along the realigned Boy Scout Road and a twelve-foot with multi-use trail along the west side of Binion Road as well. These fea- these features not only improve access to State Road four twenty nine, but also enhance pedestrian and bicycle connectivity within the city's growing west side. Project footprint is designed to minimize right-of-way impacts and preserve access for adjacent properties. With the project scope established, the next step is clarifying on how the city and CFX share responsibilities, which is defined in this ILA, the interlocal agreement. The ILA clarifies ownership limits wherein the city retains responsibilities for local roadways, while CFX maintains control over the limited access right-of-way. CFX is responsible for the design permitting and construction of all interchange facilities and will fund a hundred percent of the project's design, construction, permitting and long-term maintenance. CFX also requires all necessary permits and maintains improvements within the LA right-of-way after completion. City responsibilities include reviewing CFX plans for compliance with city roadway standards and acquiring necessary right-of-way for Binion Road and Boy Scout Road and maintaining those improvements after completion. The division of responsibility is straightforward and ensures no city construction cost participation. All project funded, funding is being provided by CFX through its five-year work program. After council approval, the project will proceed to the CFX board for approval, then followed by final design and construction. City staff will continue to coordinate with CFX throughout this process as well. To conclude, this agreement represents a major step forward in improving mobility and access for Apopka delivers a critical transportation improvement with no city construction costs while enhancing safety, connectivity and multimodal travel options to support continued growth in the area. Therefore, staff recommends that city council approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Apopka and CFX for the State Road four twenty nine, Binion Road half in- interchange and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and related documents. We also have a couple of representatives from CFX with us this afternoon, partners who have worked closely with us throughout the the process. And I'd like to invite them to briefly introduce themselves. And if they'd like, share a few remarks or they don't have to, no pressure. So after that, staff will be happy to answer questions and that council may have.
Thanks, Jean. Uh I'm David Falk. I'm the Director of Engineering at CFX and I was actually here back in twenty twenty two presenting to you on the PDNE study with the uh alternatives that we had.
Good afternoon. I'm Aaron Johnson. I'm an engineering project manager at CFX. Uh I've been managing this project. It's been great working with the city on this and we're excited to move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Jean or the team from CFX?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Thank you for this presentation. Kinda give us a a background of how we got here again. It has been a long, long road, no pun intended, but we're here in, you know, heading towards that direction. If you can go back to the uh the map of of what that's supposed to look like. Previously, we had talked about a lot of different options. Is this, this is what we're going with?
This is it. This is the exhibit to the, to the agreement, yes.
Okay, understood. So that, this is exactly what's gonna happen there then. So and I, there was some concerns of access points to um what I'm gonna call old uh old Boy Scout Road. I don't know what we're gonna call that, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it that for now. Uh and and I see that there's two different uh kinda ingress egress to old Boy Scout Road. And that's what's gonna happen, because before it was either a kind of one or the other, but both are gonna happen now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, understood. And then the uh I, to what extent are we through design? Is it completely done, the design phase?
No, we're um, we're still working through design. We're about a month out from ninety percent plans. Um and then we expect to have bid plans uh in June of next year.
Okay, understood. And then timeline, once plans are done to completion?
Complete, well, we expect to get out to construction uh or provide our ad for construction uh late or quarter three, uh twenty twenty six. Um, we expect bids late quarter for uh twenty twenty six. And then it's a, we expect about two years of construction, so we could have it done possibly by the end of twenty twenty eight.
Understood. Thank you so much for that information. Thanks for being here today too.
Any other questions for the team?
No, those, those were the questions I was gonna ask, like when were they going to start with the um construction of that, of that road?
Really, for us tomorrow, if we can.
Alright, no other questions? Anybody from the public want to speak? Yes, come on up.
Hi, Bobby Boy, uh two three one seven, Boy Scout Road. Um, I'm concerned with the maintenance of the access road. What's gonna be realigned? And also.
Bobby, be, be sure, try to talk idiot, there you go. I know it's, okay, there you go.
The maintenance of that access part, uh also facilities for turning around the garbage trucks and the mail trucks when they go ahead and deliver and pick up. Uh, sorry, and um I'm just wondering about, about future care. Uh when you do that, where the, my ground has been not taken care of really well. It's, it's, they're working on it or towards it where the asphalt meets the, the ground. Uh, I'm trying to heat the water from washing out the rest of it. And where the uh retention pond on the view is designed or engineered to stay on their own property, except it doesn't. It comes under Boy Scout Road and is residing in the back of eleven properties. Nor they're, they're sort of flooding. Uh and of course, when we have rains or any kind of storms, just of course, that also is designed to come over under us. And I'm just wondering how much more water we're going to have to be putting up with. As it's, it's destroying our land value, not having usable land for resale. And some of my neighbors are worried about that too. And also, uh the one neighbor has um semis and he's, he's landlocked with part of his equipment at the back of the, his property. Uh we don't have fire and medical access to the back of our properties because of all the water. Um, it's also coming down from um not only the view on the south side, but the Eden Crest on the north side. I'd like to have, like to have my land back. But uh it's maybe something I could talk to you, uh find out how to get ahold of you and come to your office or talk to somebody.
Well, just get them offline? Would that be best, Aaron? Okay.
I don't go online.
No, I mean, as in not, not right here. Do you get, if you get her your card, if you don't mind, and uh he can, he can get back to you. How's that, Bobby? Okay. Any, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I just wanna thank uh, thank David and Aaron for coming out today and and when you get back, tell, tell Michelle and Glenn appreciate the, the partnership that, that we've, we've enjoyed for, for many, many years. And and uh we, we really enjoy working with you guys. Y'all are the best and and uh we wanna continue to work with you as, as, as we grow and you grow and and just wanna be, be one of those partners that you can count on. So thank you, thank you for, thank you for being a part of this. Okay, with that, look for a uh motion to approve the interlocal. Okay, with that, look for a uh, motion to approve the interlocal agreement with C F X for the Binion Road, State Road four twenty-nine half interchange. Now the motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, R F Q two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two, three, five. Thanks, guys.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, first item before you, again, as mentioned, R F Q twenty twenty-five A dash two thirty-five for the design and project management of the Northwest Recreation Complex, New Softball Quad to C P H Consulting LLC is who we would like to award that to. Um, we had a committee that consisted of Cynthia Edwards, the Antimark Parks and Rec um, director, Christopher Rick- Richter, Parks Administration Manager, Donnie Rowland, Parks Administrator, and one advisory committee member, Dale Smith. So the committee is recommending approval of C P H Consulting um, for this task.
Any questions for Blanche? Just a couple of quick clarifications. We already discussed this during the agenda review, just wanna go over them again. The uh, funding for this is coming from T V T dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this is gonna be located to the south of Station Five uh, off of Jason Delly Parkway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not with close of pub hearing, look for motion to award a contract for R F Q two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two thirty-five to C P H Consulting LLC for the design and project management services for the new softball quad at the Northwest Recreational Complex.
Some-
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, R F Q two thousand twenty-five dash A dash one eighty-four.
Okay, before you, as mentioned by the mayor, R F Q two thousand twenty-five A dash one eighty-four for the water reclamation facility east plant expansion design to Tetra Tech. Again, this was another R F Q, and it is for the expansion design of the project. And we did have an evaluation committee that consisted of four voting members, which was Valad, um, Public Works Director, Glenn Brooks, our Public Utilities Director, Dafoe Utility Design Manager, and Dale Smith, the senior engineer. Again, this was a close race, similar to what we've previously experienced with our auditing services. So it's about a point two-five difference after the interviews, but the committee is recommending uh, approval uh, to award the contract to Tetra Tech.
Any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to award a contract for R F P two thousand twenty-five dash A dash one eighty-four to Tetra Tech Inc., Water Reclamation Facility East Plant Expansion Design. So, got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, R F P two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two forty-eight.
This is for consulting services for the South Apopka Annexation Feasibility Study. And we're seeking authorization to award this contract to Blue Star Holdings International. We do have some representatives here that after I complete this, allowed them to introduce themselves and give a brief presentation. Again, we only received one bid for this particular task, but we did have a great committee that um, gave us their time and a short notice, and I appreciate that. It consisted of Valad, um, our city engineer and director of public works, uh, Will Sanchez, our fire chief, um, Antranet Forbes, our director of economic development, Bobby Howe, our planning manager, um, and Lieutenant Garcia, Daniel Garcia, Field Services in City of Apo- for the City of Apopka Police. And a non-voting member was myself. So I wanna thank the committee for the, their time and diligence, you know, through this effort. But um, we do have a tight timeline associated with this, and I have provided to you the critical event schedule in order to make this ballot. So at this time, I wanna introduce the team. Erica Maxwell, who's gonna be the project manager with Blue Star, Jordan Hester, the senior planner, and the principal planner is Matt For Gray, Forgie. Hopefully, that's it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for taking the time. My name is Erica Maxwell. I am the project lead on this. A little louder? Is that better? Okay, thank you. I'm a little, tad nervous. Um, so I'm here to speak to you today about our proposal to uh, provide the Apopka Annexation Feasibility Study uh, to incorporate South Apopka into the city of Apopka today. So um, we have a very brief presentation. I just wanna be able to walk you through our project team, our backgrounds, some proposed case studies, how we anticipate to address um, the annexation of South Apopka into the city, um, as well as our deliverables, the timeline that's anticipated from the submissions of our feasibility, all the way up to vote. Um, so, we'll go ahead and get started. So our primary project staff consists of um, six key individuals. Here we have Orin Moskovitz, who unfortunately was not able to make it today, um, but he is our project director and C E O of Blue Star. Um, as you've already met, me, Eric Maxwell, I'm the project manager and director of the um, annexation uh, for South Apopka and the feasibility study. We have Tom Slaughter, who is our senior planner, Max Forgie, who's here with us today as a principal planner, Jordan Hester, who's our senior planner, and uh, Justin Tan, who is our financial lead. We have a, several different case studies we'd just like to present to you, uh, to showcase how we work and some of the other projects that we have worked on, such as Cape Coral, being a planner of record, the West Villages, the Senior Planning Advisor, Kenneth City uh, being a lead author on the annexation area and sus- and uh, suitability and statutory compliance review for Kenneth City. Um, excuse me, West Villages. We had a de-annexation boundary audit and functional services analysis that we provided. And then with Cape Coral, we provided a comprehensive plan um, regarding annexation readiness and urban service modeling uh, for the city of Cape Coral. Additional experience um, comes from up, several other case studies, including um, a TOD project in uh, in Coral, uh, excuse me, Coconut Grove in Miami, Florida, uh, called Grove Central, um, where the team utilized traffic studies, um, studied the, the property, the demographic data to understand and better inform the decision regarding this TOD development in um, a rather dense area of Miami. Additionally, we have another uh, case study in Miami Beach um, regarding uh, property purchase and expansion and evaluation. Uh, looking at economic performances and blending uh, relative geographic um, study to provide uh, uh, an analysis in, in, in this particular area of Miami Beach. Some of our uh, core strengths include annexation feasibility, fiscal analysis, G I S mapping, legal compliance, service planning, land use, infrastructure modeling, public engagement, and policy development. So, the project background and the purpose is to evaluate the legal, fiscal, and operational feasibility of annexing South Apopka into the city's boundaries in compliance with the Florida statutes regarding annexation. And our goal here today is to provide a transparent and data-driven foundation for the city of Apopka's council, as well as the community to um, prepare for a decision to be made on the vote uh, taking place in March of twenty twenty-six. So, our scope of work here and uh, in the next month is to evaluate the annexation eligibility and statutory criteria, analyze city capacity to extend the services to South Apopka, conduct fiscal and financial analysis in regards to extending these services and incorporating um, South Apopka into the city of Apopka, as well as preparing maps, certifications, and a final report, report for both council and for the community. So we have a six-phase approach that we have put together um, uh, ahead of this proposal uh, in anticipation of executing on this project immediately. So the first phase is a project initiation and data collection where we intend to verify and scope, gather our baseline um, data source and kick off the project. Next, we will move into our mapping and legal, legal certifications, making sure that we are in compliance and, and verifying our boundaries and making, and making sure that we are meeting the statutory um, criteria for the annexation of South Apopka. The third phase is um, municipal service extension plan, so we'll be outlining service delivery and infrastructure in- expansion. The fourth phase is financial and fiscal impacts um, into extending these services. So we'll be looking at it, uh, we'll be, excuse me, evaluating costs, revenues, and funding feasibility. Then we'll be drafting our report um, and working with y'all and uh, in the city to compile our findings and review with you all to uh, determine whether or not we want to move forward uh, with the referendum. And finally, we'll uh, submit a final report um, and present to you, to you all um, to decide whether or not we wanna move forward and ideally make a conclusion. So we've, several deliverables that we um, plan to present to you. We have a comprehensive annexation feasibility study uh, that we will find, we hope to be compliant with the uh, Florida statute. Uh, certified boundary and service area maps for the current and proposed areas, G I S data sets, and uh, shape files for annexations, utilities, and service infrastructure, municipal service extension plan detailing how and when services would be provided, fiscal impact and financing analysis for revenues, expenditures, and capital costs, annexation eligibility certification, verifying continuity, continuity, excuse me, compactness and urban character, executive summary and presentation materials for city council and public meetings, public-facing versions of the study for community transparency and, as well as posting online on the city's website, final submission package in both a digital and printed form delivered to the city and to Orange County. Lastly, here is our timeline for after we submit our, our study to you all um, and what we anticipate it looks like moving forward to the ballot. So our anticipated delivery for this feasibility study is December second of twenty twenty-five. On December third, we hope to present our findings to you after giving you all twenty-four hours to review the report. Next, it will be taken to public notice in mid-December where the city should be mailing out notices to property owners and residents of South Apopka. By late December, we have public hearings um, that will be published, council hearings and ordinance adoption starting in December, in January, uh, around January seventh of twenty twenty-six um, with the first public hearing on the annexation ordinance. January twenty-first of twenty twenty-six, we'll have a second hearing potential of, and potential ordinance adoption. And then moving into February, um, the uh, early February ballot coordination with Orange County Supervisor of Elections, and by March tenth, annexation referendum where residents can vote on the South Apopka annexation. So we are very committed to supporting the city of Apopka through our comprehensive feasibility analysis and would welcome any questions that you all have for me and the team.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, I know this is dear, near to your heart. Do you wanna start?
Uh, yes, my, my first question is I noticed the deadline you had to submit to the supervised election to be in the March ballot, and I thought I heard the attorney said earlier that we had to have it in by January in order to be placed on the ballot.
Yeah, I thought it was January sixth that he had said earlier.
Yes.
He did mention January sixth. When we prepared the scope of work, um, the attorney that we worked with at that time, she gave us the date of December, but she did say she had to verify that date. So that gives us a little bit more time, so I was happy to hear that, January sixth, myself.
Okay, we, we, but go, go back to that time schedule again?
Okay, when we prepare-
No, 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 on the, on the slide, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright, so, so here it says February.
No, I was talking about the December second.
For the final completion and presentation?
Of the study.
Alright, but, but are we gonna be able to meet the deadline to get it to supervised election? Cause here it says February to March for ballot coordination with county supervised election.
The, are you asking about the study itself for the election?
In order for it to be on the ballot.
Yes, it's a, that was one of the statute. You remember, I went through the statute requirements. This annexation study is the thing we have to do next before we can get to, do anything else.
No, but my, my question is about the deadline. When does it have to be to the supervised election?
Okay, the information we got, and I think it was actually a part of the uh, information we got for our charter stuff, is the last day is January fifth, twenty twenty-six. Am I right? So that's, that would be when it was.
Alright, so that's my question, cause this says February.
I apologize for the uh, for the inaccurate date. So it should be January twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright.
Noted. Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we made that. And can we get a copy of this presentation that you've given us today?
Absolutely. We have submitted it to Blanche, so it, there is a digital copy that has been submitted to the city.
Alright, and I just wanted to say thank you for your uh, willingness to take on this project, and we look forward to it.
Great, thank you. We look forward to working with you as well. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanna drill down on those dates a little bit more, because wouldn't the both first and second readings of the ordinances need to be finished prior to January fifth? The, what has to, yes, is the answer, because you couldn't get it to the supervisor elections in ballot form before that date. So, so I need, should this all be what everybody wants? We would need, this annexation feasibility study, it's stating on this timeline by December third, that same meeting, I would need the first reading of this ordinance. I would need December, whatever the second meeting in December is. Unless you call a special meeting, that's correct. And um, there, there needs to be decisions made, because one of the decisions that is still outstanding is whether you want a dual election or just a single. The single, meaning that in South Apopka itself, is all that's legally required. But you have the option of having it needed to be approved by both the voters in Apopka and South Apopka. That's not been decided yet, but that's a decision that's in front of you. Does that need to be a part of the feasibility study? No. Okay. So, this timeline has got to be microwaved quite a bit if this is- To keep march, yes. Okay.
So are you able to do that?
We believe that we will be, we can produce a feasibility study within a month turnaround timeline. Yes, we do. So long as the expectations that we have set forth are met regarding data collection, um, being able to work with Orange County as well as the city of Apopka to gather our data, and also as so, so long as there are no other additional needs outside of the current, uh, current expectations. We believe we can turn this around in the time that's requested, yes.
Alright, so if we approve this today, then, I mean, you can start work tomorrow.
Probably tonight.
Alright, um, and then uh, to our attorney, you mentioned uh, about a dual election is not required. Only if the residence has been affected or required to vote legally. And I think at one meeting, it was said that the council could vote because we actually represent the city. Is that acceptable?
Uh, when you say a vote, like in the election for South Apopka?
No, and, and, and to accept the annexation.
Yeah, let, let me, let me explain. What that, the reason it's optional, it didn't used to be. The reason it's optional is it's a recognition of if you could annex any other property, right? If, if somebody brought you as an application, you wouldn't go to the voters, it would be your decision. You've made that decision regarding Sip's Tavern, I think, is gonna come up here for a second reading here today. So that's normal. And so because of that, the legislature changed the rules and said, you know what? It makes no sense. If the people in the annexation area, South Apopka in this case, have voted that they're willing to be included, then your power shouldn't be taken away to say, okay, that's good for us. However, they've left it as an option. If you say, you know, we, we wanna hear from the voters that are in Apopka as well, as to whether they think this is a good idea, you have the option of calling or having a dual referendum.
We, we have to have both, but we can either do it together or-
No, no, no. It's, you, you don't have to have both. You could, you only have to have the one in South Apopka, but if you wanna have one that's in both the city and the area to be annexed, you can. That's optional.
And, and that option, if, if the city of Apopka residents say no?
Then it doesn't go through, cause you've chosen that option.
Okay.
And, and you, so we're saying in December, if we go with the timeline that's provided here, notices and all of those things as well, and publishing of these hearings, again, that, that would have to happen within the next couple of weeks then, as well, correct? Yeah, the, I'm looking at, we had been asked to prepare and did prepare a proposed timeline of data, of deadlines, and it does still end up with March tenth being the date. However, there are some dates that come after, cause at the time, we didn't have the, the, the stuff from the supervised elections. There are things that come after January fifth, twenty twenty-six, that I don't know whether they can be adjusted or not. There are things that come after January 5th, 2026, that I don't know whether they can be adjusted or not. And I'll give you an example. Uh, based on this, uh, calendar, if you will, proposed calendar, there's a second publication notice for public hearing on annexation ordinance for January, by January 15th. There's a dated second public hearing, January 21, 2026, uh, and no later than February 27, 2026, and so forth. And so all, if, if those deadlines that are in this proposed schedule can still be met and get the stuff to the supervised elections that it needs to go forward, then we're good. I just don't, I'm not sure about that. I do know, we do now have their deadline and it's January 5th, 2026 for the March election.
I think we're putting an extremely aggressive timeline on this. I, I am perfectly happy with, you know, having the vote for South Apopka annexation, but I, I don't know why we can't just wait. I mean, with the commitment from the, the city council that we put this on the August primary for the county and then for city residents in the November election, would that be?
I don't know that they have to be at the same time, so I think that's a possible option. The first decision is whether you want to have the both, the dual referendums.
I think we need to have both and, and, and the, and the reason I say that is because it's, 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 there will be costs associated from the, the, the city resident side will, will pay. I mean, I don't know what, whatever the, the number is, they work through those numbers. That it will be a cost to city residents to annex South Apopka. So I think that, that we ought to have, first off, find out if, if the county residents want to be annexed. And then a second, so if you did in August, November, you could do August. And if, if it failed, then you wouldn't need the November. And if it passed, then you would, you would bring it forward in November.
I think that's accurate. Now, let me also say this. We do not know yet what will be the outcome of the charter amendments that are on March. But if they pass, that would mean instead of it being a special election in November, you'd be on the regular calendar. So you wouldn't have to pay the extra money.
Correct. That, that was my whole, my whole thought, both, both the primary and the, and the general. So we could do the August primary would be, um, wouldn't cost us anything, nor would the, the November general.
Beyond what your normal election costs are.
I mean, I think, you know, I know we've, we've, we have, we have talked about it, you know, for a couple of years now and, and, but I don't, I mean, we did, this is just such an aggressive timeline. I, I just would feel more comfortable. I mean, I think we, if we want to, you know, the commitment from the board that we're going to do it in August and do it in November or whatever, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable. I just, last thing we want to do is, is give expectation that, that we'll be on the ballot and, and we, you know, we, we, we.
I, I have, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So I just have a question. So I was speaking to different residents. I have some that doesn't want it and some that does, do. And I guess my concern is I don't, I don't have the, the data to even support eve, a vote on if I would even approve this because it's so split with the residents. So is there, I know I was on the council when there was these different workshops. So in regards to the data, to the numbers, do, how many residents that want to be annexed in? And how many are saying they do not? I think that's important because I only, only know two people that said they want in South Apopka. I spoke to that wanting to be annexed in every, I spoke to 20 who doesn't. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out like, do we have data before we move forward with $87,000 study with a potential that we can believe they can get that, the deadlines completed? I just, what, where's the data to support even the study?
The only thing I can tell you is along with this analysis, we were requested to do a survey.
Yes.
As well.
And what, what are those numbers with the survey?
And we haven't done it yet. That's something that was supposed to be happening.
First before we even got to $87,000.
But this council decided to do both at the same time. And that's something that we had.
But doesn't the survey support if we want to move forward with this?
But at, at the direction of the council, they wanted to do both at the same time. So we're still.
And that is correct, that we agreed we was going to do both at the same time. And there are an overwhelming number of residents that's in unincorporated Apopka that wants to be annexed into the city. And they're constantly asking, when is this going to take place? And they say that we keep kicking the can down the road. And because we continue to do that, they get the idea that we don't want them. And that is the message that we're sending. Not that they don't want to be a part of us. That they're getting the, the, the concept that we don't want them because we keep postponing, postponing, postponing. And we've been talking about it for eight years now.
We're, I just, the data, and I understand that and I a hundred percent support that. But once again, you know, some people probably say they talked to a hundred people. Somebody talked to 20 people. Where's the data? Where's the survey to show these numbers? Because I can't support spending $87,000 moving forward when I don't know if it's even, I just need the numbers. For me, maybe someone can ask, but I just need the numbers.
Can I ask a question? Cause I, I actually did, by, what I did was all the days in between all these deadlines. And so the most important one is, is part of your feasibility going to be going to the actual residents in South Apopka, knocking on their door, asking them if they want to be, uh, annexed in? I mean, how are you going to get that, that debt?
Absolutely. So there's multiple forms. I am going to let, um, some of our, uh, other team members speak to, speak to that. But there are other alternatives. If we were to do door-to-door canvassing, um, to speak to residents individually, we would request additional time to run the feasibility study as we do anticipate. It would take somewhere in a lead up between 30 and 60 days to run the canvassing. And then perhaps another 15 days to run the analysis of the numbers.
Right, because when I, I looked at all the dates in between and other than today is November 5th. And then by December 2nd, you only have 27 calendar days, of which 16 days are sort of workdays, I'm going to say. So, you know, how, how are you going to get any data? There isn't enough time in between, even for number five, when it says submit copy of feasibility study to the Orange County Board of Commissioners. Says by December 3rd. And then the next one is the regular council meeting, select the firm, December 3rd. So on the same day, you, you're going to the county and to the city? I didn't quite understand that timeline there. It says present the feasibility study to the city council. So you're submitting it to the Orange County on the same day? Are you expecting some feedback from the county? Or, or a vote from the county? I, I don't. Five and six kind of confuse me because it's the same date.
Understood. Thanks.
Max forty, um, and it's, uh, prin, prin, uh, principal planner?
Yes, senior planner and planner of record.
Right, right. First of all, uh, uh, commissioners, uh, Anderson and Velazquez are asking about data and analysis. That, that does take a while. It would be, it would be, we could, um, give you a much more complete, uh, uh, report and more defensible report if we had a little bit more time. I mean, this, this is a very tight deadline. We, we.
It appears to be that.
We, 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 we can do it, but we can do it better with a little more time.
Right, because then number seven says mail written notice to each person who resides or owns property within the area proposed to be annexed. And from December 3rd to December 18th, you've got 15 calendar days, which excludes two Saturdays, two Sundays. And you're really close to the holidays.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is what concerns me because, I mean, human nature, the holidays are here. This is not a priority. I mean, people are just trying to get through the holidays. And I thought this was the most important one because you want the residents to be, to give you a feedback. You have to, the, their families, if they have children, they're out of school. So they're not really going to give their attention to this. And that's my concern.
Yes, this is not optimal.
Whole list and I'm thinking, are we going to get a true number? Are we going to get a participation? My understanding that in, in, in South Apopka right now, what is it? 1,500 homes in that area? Am I correct in saying that?
3,000.
Oh, 3,000. So you're only going to give them like 15 calendar days to really respond to a, a survey? Is that what we're saying?
Commissioner, Commissioner, this study is required to even take the next step to go to referendum. And what it really is, is it could be a tool for the residents in that area and residents of the city to see what the impacts are, see what the opportunity is, and then make a decision on whether or not they'd like to go forward.
So let me kind of boil down, I think, what Commissioner Anderson and maybe Velazquez are talking about. So first of all, I, I think the timeline is too aggressive. I just don't see any way in the world we can make March and do it, do it properly. So let's, let's, so let's push the date off to August. Let's say it, as a part of your, the contract, the feasibility is a, is the front end of that. Could we, so let's say we, we, um, we go ahead and, and sign the, we, we agree to, to the contract today. But we go through the first part of that, which is the, the, the survey. And the survey comes back overwhelmingly against it. Are we now committed to your, so let's say that's $20,000 of the contract. Is there a way that we can pay the 20, the first 20,000 for the work that you've, what you've done? And then say, okay, guys, sorry, but it didn't work out. South Apopka doesn't want to be annexed in. So we don't want to pay the rest of the, and plus by giving us until August gives us a lot more time to, I mean, the survey shouldn't take that long. But, but as Commissioner Velazquez is talking about, holidays are not good time.
Optimal, right.
Is that? And I guess that maybe is even a, a, a Blanche question as well.
And let me ask this before you actually answer that question. Another thing was she wasn't sure if they were going to do a door-to-door canvassing. It was very broad. So she wasn't really sure when you asked the question that if.
Whether or not we were going to be doing.
Door-to-door canvassing or not. Like you wasn't really sure. So.
Well, under the current timeline, there is no time to do door-to-door canvassing, to do, to run our feasibility study.
Was prepared in $87,000 included or did not include door-to-door?
It does, it does not include the door-to-door study.
It could be additional costs associated with that.
Likely there would be an additional cost for that because we would need to hire an outside firm. Yes.
So, yeah, so I don't even feel comfortable moving forward with even this contract if we haven't outlined what exactly is that we're looking to do or accomplish here.
So Blanche could, can, is a part of the contract, can we add?
I don't know if it was solicited in that manner. We have to look at the scope, you know, and how it was solicited. I mean, the, the good thing about it, that we did only have one response, you know, to this particular effort, but. And, and I will say, I must say, if we're talking about changing the timeline, some of the companies did not respond because of the aggressive timeline.
And maybe we can get more, you know, more competitive.
So. I know Commissioner Smith, I mean, this is one of his top priorities and I, and I, I want to respect that, you know, his, his wishes, but I just don't think that it's, it's fair to the public or fair to, to us that to have to try to push this thing through by March. But I, I, but I, I'm with, with Commissioner Anderson. I think we need to get the survey, let's find out. I mean, Commissioner Smith said there's a lot of people that are for it. I've, and I, I've heard maybe the opposite or, or anyway, I'd like to know, I mean, if it's, if it's overwhelmingly against it or overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly for it, then let's, let's move on. And if it's not, I mean, if it's, if it's 50/50, then maybe, you know, at that point, we, we, you know, we go to the next step.
How long would it take for the survey? Have we initiated anything with the survey at all?
That question again, please?
The survey? The survey that we had discussed?
It, it, the survey will, how is it like a month? I think it's a month. It would be nice to have another month or two. And.
It, and.
I was talking, I'm sorry, that was in, that was directed at our plan.
And Cliff, to the, to the survey, is it the, the, goes back to the, is it the property owner or the resident that is?
What you would do is you would try to find the, the, uh, registered voters, uh, who are going to be voting in the annexation area. And that is because it, it, there's a, there's a formula based on how much of the area is property owners versus residents who aren't property owners and so forth. And if you trip the, that thing, then it has to be property owners only. But if you don't, and I stand, what is, I want to, in my mind, it's like 70%.
I think 70%, that's the number I remember.
And so, um, that's the issue. So I think in this case, we had looked at that and it would be registered voters in the area to be annexed. But I'm, I, I can verify that for you, but that's my, as I'm sitting here, that's what I think the rules are. And.
It's not property owners, it's residents.
Yes, who will be voting on whether the property therein gets annexed. Now, that's only based on percentages. So if the numbers that we're assuming are wrong, then it goes to property owners. Okay.
So to, to answer your question, um, I would say 30 to 45 days. If we get what we want in the survey, and I think that was one of the challenges before. Cause we don't have, what questions do you want to have, you know, included?
Are you doing that in-house, preparing that survey?
That was the original plan.
So we're going to work with Attorney Shepherd in order to establish that.
Again, make, make sure we have the appropriate questions on the survey.
The, the first, the, 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 the irony of, of what's being asked, and I understand why it's being asked, is that the annexation vote is what's supposed to tell you whether they want it or not. That's what you have the referendum for. But again, there's nothing that precludes getting sort of a preliminary survey. And it can be done by this company or subcontractor's company. It can also be done by simply sending a flyer to the people who are registered property owners and voters in the area and say, hey, we're considering annexing you. This, do you, would you support annexation? Yes or no? What you put in there though, and this is the thing you have to be careful of, and the same would be whoever's doing a survey. No city, local government any kind can campaign, quote unquote, for any issue or person. And this would be a valid issue. So you could not say, these are all the advantages of why you should say yes. Or these are all the disadvantages and why you should say no. You can just say, would you like to be annexed? And it would be up to them to try to get their own information. And part of that comes from the study that these folks would be doing as a part of the whole annexation process. So you, you essentially, this, this survey would be no better or worse than a straw poll. Do you favor annexation generally? Yes or no? And that would give you some idea, but obviously the, it's the final referendum vote that is the one that matters.
I mean, we've had several workshops. I have over workshops. And it was, you know, and, and, and I did say this, the concern was, and I was going to, the priority of the concern for most of the residents, and we had quite a few residents who did show up from South Apopka was the cost. What was the impact of the cost for them to be annexed?
That, that's an interesting question because it depends on so many things. For example, um, I don't know how many of these affected owners and/or residents, potential residents would be required to, for example, tap into our sewer if it was available that they don't have to do right now. But usually that's a mandatory thing in most cities and there's a charge associated with that. So that's an example of an impact. If they are already hooked into it and already paying essentially city rates, then that's not going to impact them. They might get a lower rate for being within the city. But the information that we can provide would have to be simply factual and not pushing one way or the other. And that's whether it's us or someone on our behalf, i.e. the company we're talking to now or somebody else. And so, and that's about the, we can't essentially electioneer for any issue or candidate. So that's kind of the way that goes. But when you say, well, what are the costs? You'd have to know for each individual, okay, what are your, are you already on city water? Well, that's not going to cost you. A, a, any additional, you may save money. Are you already on city sewer? If yes, then you may save money, you know, or at least the things would stay the same. But if you're on a, if you're a vacant property owner and you're looking to come into the city, well, are, are impact fees higher or lower than the ca, I don't know. So it's an individual thing. And that's why probably the, except for people doing their own individual research, this would be nothing more than a straw poll because every answer I could give you would depend exactly on, okay, but what are your circumstances?
I do remember at the workshops that what they really enjoyed about the city services was the fire, police response from pi, fire police.
And sanitation.
Two-day pickup and recyclables. That was something that kind of lacked in Orange County. Cause they felt the response from Orange County for their needs at the moment, the wait time was too long. Um, and all, and they felt because they're right here in our backyard that it was easier to, to have our services. The wait time was too long, um, and all, and they felt because they're right here in our backyard that it was easier to, to have our services.
And this is the kind of thing.
That's my, that's what I remember with all the workshops.
The feasibility study should at minimum conducted allow you to extrapolate whether response times would be quicker, the same, or slower. But it's an extrapolation because until you do it, you're just guessing.
And, and attorney, uh, is, hmm, it's my understanding that if they have a functioning septic tank, that they're not mandated to connect to sewer?
I, I don't know what the ordinance is here. Eh, that may certainly be the situation where they are currently in the county. But most cities, and I'm not sure, cause I'll, I'll look that up for you and find out here. But in most cities, there's a requirement that if sewer or wastewater or other hookups are within a certain eh, footage of the property, there's a mandatory hookup requirement because generally speaking, septic tanks are not favored. But that may not be your ordinance, I just don't know.
All right, so, so can you find that for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Eh, eh, then my o- other concern is, we're, we're talking about doing a survey and asking, do you want to be a part of the city, do you not want to be a part of the city? And when you don't have any information as to what you're saying cost, then that's why we need the feasibility study because that's what they're gonna be able to tell us is what that cost is.
That, that provides some of the information, but again, different property owners will have different information from that same study. Like, as I mentioned, are you already on city water? Are you already on city sewer or are you not? Uh, do you have vacant property or are you occupied property? And do you have a plan to build? What are the impact fees for the county for what you're trying to build versus what they would be in the city? And so each of these things, which will be covered in the study, but they won't be to a specific property. You will literally have to look at the study and then extrapolate based on where category you fall in, how you will be financially affected. From a party, from a, a standpoint of taking a survey before the feasibility study, that information is not available to you yet. Unless you just kind of do your own research.
We've discussed a lot up here, I think there's some residents that wanted to, came for comment, so I'd love to hear from them right now if possible, just so that will help kind of.
From South of.
I have some carbs. Francine and Boykin.
We'll hear some from South of. Francine. This friends, she called. Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nelson and constituents of the council. I am Francine O'Boykin, address fourteen eighty-four Ellerton Drive, Apopka, Florida. I oppose annexation of unincorporated Apopka into the city limits. And I feel it is ludicrous that we should spend eighty-eight thousand dollars to study a neighborhood that the Apopka created back in nineteen thirty-seven. When an ordinance went out saying, an ordinance to segregate the places of residence and business of white and Negro persons and prescribing a boundary line separating the places of residence or business of the two said races and making a breach of such ordinance disorderly conduct and providing a penalty for violation of such. The city of Apopka created this eh, this segregated community almost eighty-some years ago. I live in what has been dubbed as South Apopka. And I'm content with my community as it is. I didn't realize how much fuss until I sat here today that was being made over my community, which people most time makes fun of our little shacky houses and rundown, uh, buildings, you know, the black man then come to Apopka begging. He was segregated from this community in nineteen thirty-seven, forced to the south of Apopka. People like LT Hunt, Ralph Comby, Amos Starbirds, who was real estate moguls, gave black people an opportunity to buy property and land, buy land and build homes in this community. You know, to me, for all this fuss being made over annexing my home area where I was born seventy-five years ago, I totally oppose. Now, eh, if you all want to use this annexation study from nineteen eighty-four, when this went on the referendum back in the day, it wasn't just what the little carved-out section of South Apopka. It was an, an, the entire unincorporated Apopka. Maryland, committees from the south and the committees from, I mean, the South Apopka and the committees from incorporated Apopka met months. This was June nineteen eighty-four. It was gonna appear on the referendum in November of that year. You know, this project is like, is, is crooked as a barrel of fish hooks.
Albert McKemay, three-six-zero-three, Golden Gem, Road of Apopka. This fiasco that we see today is simply because of lack of the city's due diligence. This isn't something new. This is something that has been delayed time and time again. Is it because of political expediency? Firstly, if we decide to take this annexation forward just now, is it a concern to the people of South of Pop, of South of Popka who sits in the mayor's chair? Would their vote be different if it was a different person in the chair? I don't know. But what we're trying to do today is fit a size twelve boot in Cinderella's size three shoe. We don't have time to do this just now. This should be delayed for some time till after the election, but we definitely need to do it. But in terms of going forward and going door-to-door, firstly, we are in a multicultural society. There are people gonna answer the door at four o'clock or ten o'clock in the morning. We can't go to doors and knock. We don't know what language they're gonna speak. We don't know if they're even gonna answer the door because of the fear of ice. So if we're gonna have a dual referendum, we can't only poll the people in South of Popka. If we're gonna go and poll people, we need to do it in both Apopka and South of Popka. Door-to-door isn't satisfactory way to do that. We're gonna look at another way to do that. And possibly we can use the city's website to do that. And unfortunately, because of the apathy in the city, we're not likely to get much of a result. But we need to find some way of doing this without even being door-to-door. I think there's so many things that we need to do here to make this representative. I hate to see segregation through political divide, it's repulsive to me. We are one community. The people in South of Popka pay and spend money in our shops, they deserve better than what we're doing for them today. The, we have no business, the way we've treated this, it's been treated the same way, in my opinion, as, as the city charter. We've pushed it back, pushed it back, pushed it back, until we get to the point where timeline restricts what we can do. We need to, to look at this and say seriously, yes, we want to go ahead with it. But we want to go ahead in a manner that doesn't waste the money that we're spending. We want to go forward in a manner that will benefit South of Popka as well as give the ci, the residents in the city the opportunity to voice their opinion.
Marilyn Barnes.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Nelson and the, uh, commissioners.
Marilyn, can you drop the mic down just?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon again, Mayor Nelson and the, uh, commissioners here. This is like my second time here to speak. I'm also a product of South Apopka. I want to say the southern end of Apopka. Apopka is home and my family has owned land, land in that area since early nineteen forty-five. And I'm proud to be back home and a part of that, the southern end of Apopka. I don't like using the term South Apopka because I, you never hear anything about the east side of Apopka or the west. And right now, I'm definitely not a component of annexation. There's an abundance of vacant land as I speak to you today in South Apopka, southern end of Apopka. You have to excuse me, I'm a little emotional right now. And I've done my own study and I have a group of people who we can also do a study. I've been, I was also a product of real estate growing up, okay? Fifteen years in the state of New Jersey. I've been to several of the, uh, council meetings and what I have observed lately, it's mind-boggling. South of Popka, southern end of Apopka, there's no, the economy doesn't call for what, what's going on there as I speak. We have houses in there, I'll give you one example. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? For a home that was recently sold there. And it's, uh, the lot size was like six, six thousand and five hundred square feet. The house itself, it was like, um, one thousand six hundred and fifty-two square feet. You heard the price I gave you, right? Thirty-five hundred dollars. I don't know anyone eh, in my generation or that lives in South of Popka can afford these houses. I came down here before, earlier in the year, uh, for affordable housing. So I'm not gonna come to the city of Apopka to eh, ask where the affordable housing, I think you have that, uh, plan. Uh, Ms. Moore is here, Commissioner Moore is here today, right? The CRA, and I think that's what we were talking about, affordable housing. If we have like eighty-eight thousand or whatever to do a survey, a group of us had, eh, we have done our own survey. As far as the land use, as far as the numbers concerned, the boundaries, I really don't even understand the boundaries here in Apopka. Let alone trying to, uh, bring us together or you trying to tear us apart. So I suggest that is this about the people of, 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 of southern end of Apopka or Popka in general? Or it's about a vote? What is it really about when you think about it? And not only that, eh, we just do not have the economy for what's going on as I, as I speak to you this afternoon. Not in Apopka. I just wish that would just go away because the survey that I've seen on the p, boundaries or what have you is something that the people can really do themselves. So I thank you guys for listening to me and I know my time is up and thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I know this is a very emotional issue, it is for me as well, cause I enjoyed working with the people for years. I will tell you, one of the first things, uh, I came onto in about twenty nineteen was there was a disagreement over those South of Ap, Apopka signs. And, um, they were all falling apart and half the people wanted to call it South of Apopka and the other half didn't want to call it South of Apopka, so I just took them down. And we still haven't come back in the entire seven years to figure out, you know, what was the preferred n- nomenclature of that area. Um, I would agree with you, we've had a lot of problems with trash, Mr. Velazquez, because the contract with the county, we don't have claw trucks. And we've had some challenges with proper recycling. We've had challenges with residents bundling, tying them up, putting them in cans. And so there's been quite a bit of extra attention that I've had to give to go back down periodically and clean up. So I, I could imagine that they would enjoy your type of, of garbage service. But the one thing that you didn't mention that worries me greatly, and I wanted to bring some context to that of what has been spent, was, uh, transportation costs and infrastructure costs. And so I wanted just to go over a few things that we've been able to do in the last few years and, and share with you some of those costs. Cause I think you have to consider that. If you annex all of South of Popka, then you're gonna be taking over those roads, the maintenance of those roads and all those costs. And that hasn't been said today. And so, uh, street lights, uh, a lot of these things take years and years of advocacy, but I was able to get street lights down, uh, Sheiler Road to two, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You have, uh, lights coming to Binion Road, that'll be over four hundred thousand dollars. It was in twenty nineteen that Apopka Boulevard got lights and I will tell you those monthly costs are extremely high. Um, resurfacing of roads is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a lane mile. And so all of those neighborhoods, all of those main streets would be important for you to make sure that you can budget those. Uh, sidewalks, uh, there were many, many sidewalks that we've added since I've been there. Thirteenth Street is probably the most notable, but we're not done. And so you would certainly have Seventeenth Street, Fifteenth Street and another portion of Eighteenth Street in Highland to have to do. Uh, roundabouts, crosswalks, I'm still straightening out things at Sheiler. Uh, it's taken me six months to get right of way to be able to put a crosswalk and a sidewalk at Apopka Boulevard in Sheiler. So you would have to consider that, some of those costs as well. With the corridor of the year that we just finished, um, I was very involved with having street sweeping, lighting repairs, tree trimming, sidewalk repair. We spent over three hundred thousand dollars just recently on Clercona Road to upgrade the sidewalks and put all the ADA in. Now, if you annex it, at least that's been done for you. So I just want you to consider that side of the equation. But I would tell you, as the county commissioner, Mayor Demings, and I have loved having the people in this community, and I know you would as well. And so I, I'm not gonna make a, a, a statement as to what you should do, but I know it's a tough decision. And Commissioner Smith, I know your heart's in the right place, you want to do it, but this, it's a challenging situation for everyone and so.
I have a question for you, Commissioner Smith, uh, Commissioner, uh, sorry, uh, Moore. So in regards to the cost, you said about the cost, so there are a lot of current repairs that are needed currently in that area now, is what you reference?
Well, there's still sidewalks to be put in, there's still things to do.
Cost of what's needed right now in the area?
Do I have what?
The cost, what's needed in that area that hasn't been done?
I, I could get it for you. I, I know I just added, um, Eighteenth Street into a list and so I'd have to get that for you.
So I think that will help us with know what's lacking in that area, like what hasn't been done yet.
Well, I would tell you, most of the streetlights are in, they're all LED. And, um, back in twenty nineteen, there was a complete study done of all of the needs with sidewalks and most of that uh, has been completed, so.
So it has been completed, so it's just, it's just the maintenance cost that you're referencing?
Right, but you've got to resurface these roads every twelve, you know, twelve years. And of course, I would tell you the county's struggling with those expenses as well. So I just hope that if you choose to go the study route, you really look deeply into those infrastructure costs. But I will tell you, I mean, as the county commissioner, we were happy to help, we were happy to do whatever we could do to make the community better. Thank you.
Anybody else, Susan?
Oh, Kamora.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rowan, Ghislaine. Uh, I, again, not involved with city government, but my experience in business, there's only a handful of times when you only get one bid. And I just did a quick Google search and it came up with seven companies in the area that do this type of work. Uh, which usually has something to do with A, notice, B, having to do with the timeframe or parameters that were set with regard to trying to meet those needs and depending upon the company, how busy the company is in just doing it. Also, part of it's a matter of reputation. Experience speaking, again, that the reputation being, they're not all a lot cooperative, they kind of want us to do it to kind of put it away, it's not cooperative. Or the other end of it is they're not good at making payment on a timely basis. And those are the reasons typically that go. I think there's a number of ways it could be cut. The one meeting that I did attend for eh, eh, a couple of years ago, I guess it was now, was all presentation, the whole presentation was why not to? That's all, that was just a numbers game, there's more than just numbers, numbers cut both ways, it needs to be balanced. This is an example of you talk about making use of students, whether it's high school or college. This is a challenge, something can be done. Put together a survey, yes, it can be done house-to-house, whether it's conducted by hot college or high school students or other volunteers to go out to have a neutral presentation. This is it, this is it, this is how we came up, these are the numbers are, and let them make the call, are you for it or not? It's, nothing is. It's, nothing is easy, but it's easier than we're making it.
And, and I just want to say that, you know, yes, there was ordinance put in place back in nineteen thirty-six. And here we are in twenty twenty-five, and we're still segregated. And it's time for us to become one city. And, 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 and we just keep, and I understand the timeline, I have no problem moving, waiting to August to put it on the ballot, but I think we need to get the process in place. Uh, Commissioner Moore mentioned about the streets and the sidewalks that they put in. So it, it took eighty years to get a sidewalk on Thirteenth Street. So I, I, I think that when the original study was done back in nineteen eighty-four, that the county did a good job of convincing the individuals in the incorporated Apopka that they didn't want to be a part of the city. And so that was why the results came out the way they did. But I think now people are educated, and we need to continue to educate them of the benefits of being a part of the city. Many times, individuals in unincorporated Apopka come to City Hall with concerns. And our response to them is, we can't help you, you're not a part of the city, you live in a county. The government that's closest to you can do you the most good. They're not able to vote for city commissioners or for mayors, but they have a Apopka address. And so it is the right thing to do, to give them the opportunity, those that want to be a part of this city, to be a part of the city. And I think if they give them the right information, that they will understand and appreciate the benefits of being a part of the city of Apopka. It's time for us to become one city, and cut out the divisiveness in using the fact that you live in unincorporated Apopka, so therefore, we can't do anything for you. Uh, so that's my spiel.
And if I can jump in too, and Commissioner Smith, thank you for echoing that, I think this was something you have championed for, I think, the entire time you've been elected. Uh, pretty consistent on, on that, and, and the timeline, I think, is, is, obviously, it's, it, it's presented in a way that makes it not feasible at this time. But I, I feel that was politically driven, and, and I'm sorry for that. Um, additionally too, I want to speak about what some of the residents had said, and what I'm, what I'm hearing from the residents that are speaking is that, that it's the fear of losing kind of the respect of their culture, respect of the historical context that created our, our city. Uh, concerns of affordability and getting priced out of your own community, I think those are some of the huge concerns that are going on here. And so I, I hear that, I don't, I don't want that to, I don't want you to think that we're just sitting up here not hearing that at, at all. And similar projects like this have been done, that have been done respectfully, to make sure that we're not losing historical context, to make sure that we're not pricing anyone out, to make sure that voices are still heard and heard loud. Um, it, there was a project down, it's off of Tampa Avenue, down in downtown Orlando area, and that was one that they, the, the nonprofit kind of partnered with the city to really create a respectful way of changing the city without, or that, that section of the area, to, without, uh, gentrifying, again, that's a huge thing. This isn't a land grab for the city either, uh, what I've heard at other meetings, that this is a land grab from the city to gentrify and, 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 and raise taxes and use code enforcement to take people's properties. And on, at least for me, and I would, I'm sure there's others, that, that, that's not the goal at all. I think there wants to be, there, to, to echo Commissioner Smith's points, that you need to be able to vote locally, you're paying your bills here, I want you to be able to vote as well and have such a larger impact here locally. Uh, county's much bigger, sometimes response times are, are slower. It, it's great to have some, be able to come to City Hall where you're paying your bills to be able to advocate. So I, I don't know how best to move forward with it, I, I, I hear the residents completely, and it's not without, I, I completely respect that we, you don't want to lose historical context in what has been established and so worked hard to, to be created. And, and families have passed down multi-generational properties that have been so important, so I don't take that lightly. It's how do we do this that we can become truly one community without losing historical context and the rich culture that's there as well, and without pricing anybody out? It's a real delicate balance, so, um, I, I'm, I stand with Commissioner Smith on this one to, to get this done. I, again, I think the timeline, uh, was intentionally microwaved and, and looked as, as rough as possible to make sure that we don't move forward with it. Um, but I, I don't know how we can do it properly to where both, all, both residents and, and incorporated and unincorporated can get a comfort level that the city's not trying to do a land grab, it's trying to make one community. So I don't know how we do that, this is a very unique dynamic scenario. And, and again, I, having grown up here myself as well, maybe not as many years as some others, but I, I understand that there, there was these invisible lines that were created, and, and that's just sad. It, it was sad to grow up in, and, and I think understanding that context and trying to break down that very, in, invisible barrier that, that was there is key. Again, not, not forgetting what, how we got here, but also working together to move forward as well. So I don't know what the best, now, you know, how do we go forward from here, and how do we make sure that we're, uh, doing what's best for all residents? That's the point, at the end of the day, that's who we serve, is all residents, so, um, I, I, I don't know what's best here. Again, I, I think the survey, I, I've heard everyone's comments on that, the attorney as well, that it's a straw poll, so to speak, again, that's not something set in stone, so I understand that. I, I don't know what's the best to make sure that there's a comfort level on the council level, that we're not spending money that maybe we don't need to, or that the residents in unincorporated just say, no, leave us alone, we do, we do not want to be, um, impacted by, by city council in any way, okay, got it. So I, I don't know what's best to move forward, but I do think it's absolutely something that is needed.
So I just want to say this as well, so I think we, I do not think that the timeline was politically motivated. I think that the, we gave you guys the directives, and you guys tried, tried to meet that, we voted on something, asked to bring something back, and based off of that, I think that's what happened. So I think, for one, in order for us to become one city, we need to become one up here first. And I think if we are, are creating the narrative that it's politically motivated all the time, well, honestly, we actually voted for you guys to bring it back to us. And it needed to be aggressive, tolerant for that to happen. So to create the narrative that it was politically motivated, I think that's unfair to, to everyone, not only us up here, but also to the residents. Um, I agree with Commissioner, um, S- Smith as well, I think we need to definitely do something in regards to incorporating it, but we need to see what that looks like to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and that it's, it's not rushed. So I think we all agree, um, I don't think, no one's up here saying that don't incorporate. I think that we just need to make sure that we're taking our time, for one, getting the best company to do the study for us, to make sure that we're financially spending responsible, and that we're not creating these timelines that only one company can actually bid on. So I think we just go back to the drawing board, make sure that we understand what it is we need to study, and we put it back out there. So I think that's kind of, that's where I'm going. I think that the survey, based off of his professional recommendation, I think the survey, probably should do a survey, I think really getting the data that they need so they can make an educated decision on what that looks like, how it benefit their household. So that's my recommendation, I think we move to, for one, we put it back out there for a bid, open it up a little bit longer so that, that will get more companies, we get more competitive, um, rates. And also, um, you know, give the residents time to actually look at the study, to see if they actually want to be a part of it as well. So that's what I'm moving for.
Right, because when you put this out for bid, you gave a timeline.
Yeah, the critical events.
Timeline, and this is the reason why we only had one company.
That was the reason why some did not respond.
Yes, because the other companies felt they could not...
Some did make that comment, yes, ma'am.
Let me, let me ask you this, this question, what if we just put to the, you say, was it three thousand, three thousand?
That's what we recall from when we did the workshops before, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that number, Bobby doing?
Eight thousand.
No, no idea, okay. I'd have to go back and look at some of the numbers.
Here's my thought, is what if we just put out the, the, the survey to three thousand, just a, a mail bout, I mean, a mail letter with, I think we can get, can't we get, there's like ways you can get something that can't be copied? Where it's, it's, where it's, you can tell it's, it's a fake, it, it's, it's a form of a watermark, but the answer is yes. If we send it out to the three thousand people, yes or no, do you want to be annexed?
Mm-hmm.
So that, it's three thousand, so it's probably a buck and a quarter, buck and a half, so you have to, not put a postcard back in?
Better than thirty thousand, I'll tell you that, says better than thirty thousand.
Correct. And just do a survey to the three thousand residents with a, with a, with a self-addressed envelope back to the city. And let's see what that does, and at that point, we, i- if we get...
But, but my concern with that is, is the educational component, like, they don't really, speaking with the residents, they don't know if, they don't know the benefit. So I think with this study, if we're able to get a more competitive study, they can have the data, to share the data with them, so they can look and see what are the benefits. Because they really don't know, a lot of them, just like, I want to be in, I don't want to be in, they don't really have the, the information available to make that decision. How would it benefit them? They, we, we can't tell them how it's going to benefit them.
And that, but my point was just spending three thousand dollars, and if, if it came back overwhelmingly, you know, no, then we, that's into that. If, if it's, if it's, if it's positive, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, we can, we can go back, I, so I'm, I'm, I'm completely open to whatever, whatever the will of the council is.
I think I'm, I think I'm open to giving them all the information, the facts on the study, and then allow them to make it, because you can't make an educated decision without all the information.
Okay, alright.
So I hear Commissioner Anderson's recommendation, um, I just need the council.
Okay, so it's to go back out to RFP?
With a different timeline.
Give them a, a much longer, give them the timeline so that we'll have a, we'll have it on the ballot, always back it from the, whatever the...
We'll back, that's what we did with this one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, if I can get a...
Alright, so we got a, a, uh, motion by Commissioner Anderson?
To put this back out, the RFP back out?
So we need the study, I think we definitely need the study.
Okay, alright.
So we can just put it to rest and put it out to the voters, let the voters decide, I mean...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, can we, because for the meeting minutes, can we have Commissioner Anderson give her actual motion?
Sure.
So, uh, I motion that we put the RFP back out, and what was the RFP, hold on, let me look and see what it is. The, the actual...
That would be number six.
RFP two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two forty-eight.
Number six.
Number six.
The last one.
Okay. So I motion that we put back out the RFP two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two four eight for bid. Thank you.
With, with a, with a timeline that we will, we will be on the ballot for the August primary election.
For the August primary election, yes. Is that good enough, Cliff?
It's good enough for this motion, I still don't know whether we're doing or not doing a mail survey.
We're not.
No. Okay.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
I'll start.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now.
Thank you.
I need a two-minute break.
Okay, two-minute break. Next up, we've got ordinance number thirty-one oh eight.
Thirty-one oh eight.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh eight. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to residential estate for certain real property owned by PM S one REO LLC, H MF LLC, Charles P Stallings, Kim L Stallings, Yule E Stallings Junior, and Crystal Denise Stallings. Located on the northwest corner of Mondike Road and State Road four fifty-three, State Road four twenty-nine comprising of one hundred ninety-six point eight three acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, June? All right. Anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
I'll be with K B three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I'm certainly not against this proposed development or what it means. But bearing in mind a question I asked earlier on today was was respect to drainage and sewage and the fact that the city had apparently sent out a letter to say the capacity wasn't satisfactory on new developments. I'm looking today before you guys commit to allowing the second here to go forward. Do we actually know if the city are engaged with talks with Orange County? And if they are, how are those talks going? And if they're not, why are we considering more development?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, just question here is asked me, this will generate seventy-eight more students. If you go along anywhere along Sheila, there's spotty sidewalks along the way. We need to make sure that any new development, unlike Kelly Park, where you have the Kelly Park School and kids are walking in the ditch to go to school.
I think we're on a different project.
I understand that Sheila, this is Sheila Road.
Not this one.
No.
Sorry, this is the one on on ditch. It's in the KPI Northwest.
Ah.
Sheila is coming up though.
Had it wrong. Two is coming up, so I'm one ahead. Anyway, it's still the same thing. Any development ought to be connected to the next development, clear sidewalks, and schools within two miles.
Anybody else wants to speak on this one? Okay, not close to public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one oh eight.
Well, before jumping to that, the the question of the the sewage capacity, are we we're good on that? Can we just speak to that to bed one way or the other? And then are we talking to Orange County in reference to that as well for capacity?
Yes, we are talking to Orange County Vladimir Simanovsky, Public Works Director and City Engineer. We we're making a good progress with that. Uh, we we expect by the end of the year to have an agreement with Orange County. And that will include two million gallons of additional day treatment for wastewater. And just today you approved Tetra Tech actually to start the design on the next five million gallons of expansion at the wastewater treatment plant that we have on Cleveland.
Uh, thank you for that. So if if Orange County, we don't come into agreement there, do we have capacity as is right now?
We do have right now capacity and I have issued letters. There was, I believe, small misunderstanding that there was a period of like three weeks where we were evaluating. So I put a stop to approving any of the FDP permits just to make sure that we have everything in line. And we continued as as a matter of fact, today I approved two projects. I think it was on the south and there was another one, I believe, Bronson Reach Parcel Nine with another forty-one or forty-three parcels. So so we do continue to approve the capacity. To get some clarification on Mr. McKinney's question earlier. With the treatment of the West Point, basically the West Point is meeting the current standards of ten milligrams per liter. Uh, total nitrogen treatment. What's gonna happen is when the permit expires and needs to be renewed in twenty twenty-eight, it will have to go to three milligrams per liter and that's where we're looking into potentially even rehabbing that or going to Orange County. And of course, we most likely going to be under construction at the time for the next five million gallons.
Okay, and that one is that the West one is up and running then? And we are using that?
It's not running currently, but it's meeting the the current standards because the current permit is for ten milligrams per liter for total nitrogen.
Uh, why why aren't we using it?
It's ten milligrams per liter for total nitrogen treatment.
Right, why aren't we using that plant?
Oh, why we're not using it?
Mm-hmm.
We currently we have about three point nine million coming into the plant, which the five million that is running satisfies the need for now.
Okay, I guess that why would we need to go to Orange County then if we can just use that one?
Because I we believe that's gonna come in a time when the permit is gonna overlap, which is probably about two, two and a half years from now. I think two and a half years should be July of twenty twenty-eight. So we don't know how the development is gonna go. Is it gonna slow down? Is it gonna continue with the same pace? We just wanna work ahead of time and be prepared for any possible scenarios.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public? Not with close to public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one oh eight. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second. Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one thirty-one.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-one. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to county low density. At. Let me go back. Changing the future land use designation from county rural and county low density to city residential low density for properties located at nineteen twenty Sheeler Avenue. Owned by Marvin Wayne Reed and Susan Thomas Reed comprising forty point one six acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes, June? Anybody from public who should speak on this one?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, only his lane, sorry, on the Under's Road. Uh, but both Under's Road and this this development along Sheila are not within two miles of schools. But these developments should have connectivity between developments because kids go back and forth for their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not close to public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one thirty-one.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-three.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-three. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to RTF Residential Two Family District for certain real properties generally located at nineteen twenty Sheeler Avenue. Owned by Marvin Wayne Reed and Susan Thomas Reed comprising of forty point one six acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes, June? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not with close to public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one twenty-three. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-nine.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-nine. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described Liam situated in being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by David Cipriani, located at fifty-one eighteen Plymouth Sorento Road comprising of point four one acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Just two very minor changes for the record. Bobby, how planning manager at the first reading, it was requested to put in the annexation agreement connection to sewer. Uh, the applicant has done that. And also at about eleven forty-five this morning, the applicant sent myself and the city attorney an email stating they reached out to the property owner of the Wingspan Development and were not able to get a response back. Uh, this planning staff had reached out to them as well and spoke to them and they said they would check with the owners, but we've not received response response back. There was a revised portion of the annexation agreement that says the owner and the city agree to continue exploring opportunities for potential intercross connectivity between the property and adjacent Wingspan Development during the site plan process for the property. Other than that, those are the only changes.
Any other questions for Bobby?
So so they they get a response that they will have some connectivity between their property and Wingspan?
The applicant did not receive a response from Wingspan, yes. But there's a provision in the agreement that is sent over here at about eleven forty-five. It's not in your packet that says we'll continue to work to try and get that interconnectivity.
Yeah, because that was part of the first approval was that they get some connectivity with Wingspan.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a big request of mine just because that's the kind of spirit of what the KPI looks like. Again, it I understand the complexities that go along with that and we can't force the Wingspan to to do this, but at the same time, we can keep those conversations going. I think it's beneficial for all parties. I think it benefits. There's a good synergistic value between both projects, um, success rates to be able to do that, make a little walkable as well. So I appreciate um, the applicant working on that and trying to to move that forward and then committing as well to uh, continue those conversations down the road as well.
And he gives us another bite at the apple, so we still got.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody from public?
I'll be with K B three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Perhaps somebody can give me some understanding. I obviously have a fundamental misunderstanding of what SB one eighty means. Uh, I would have thought that if the city and the DRC had approved this plan to come before you, the commissioners, whether it had sewer or whether it had septic, isn't really a concern of the of the commission. The fact is that it passed the necessary requirements to be brought before you. So in terms of SB one eighty, commissioners, by you deciding that you're only gonna do it with sewer sewer, are you adding an unnecessary encumbrance on the property owner? Should we not in fact today pass this irrespective of whether or not we have negotiated with the the other company? Here's a fundamental right that I think we're interfering with. Because it was brought before you by the planning and they found the septic was suitable. Why are we trying to force somebody to do something when in fact today we already know that sewage is a concern in the city anyway? If somebody can run on septic, you know what? Let them run on septic. Let's get the man developed and let him get up his business instead of dragging things out.
Anybody else from public? Not look for a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one twenty-nine. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one thirty-five.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-five. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property located at fifty-one eighteen Plymouth Sorento Road comprising point four one acres more or less. Owned by David Cipriani, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not with close to public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one thirty-five. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one thirty-six.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-six. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A one Citrus Rural District to city K P I M U Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Village Center District for certain real property located at fifty-one eighteen Plymouth Sorento Road comprising point four one acres more or less. Owned by David Cipriani, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not with close to public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one thirty-six. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-one.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-one. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from residential medium mixed use to for property located at one fifty-five M A Board Street. Owned by Magic Houses LLC comprising of point two seven acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Is anybody from the public here to speak on this one? If not, we look to to continue this item until the November nineteenth city council meeting.
Oh, this is the one that they continuing? It was continued before, wasn't it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we're doing it till November nineteenth?
Yes.
Is that something that needs to be voted on or just stated? Okay, so moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Commissioner Nester, why don't you get us started on city council reports?
Definitely. It's been a a good productive week. Um, I want to first congratulate again to our chief, Dr. Quinn Henry. Welcome. Excited for you and and congratulations to your newly appointed deputy chief Garcia. That is awesome. Very cool that you're promoting from within. I think it's just huge motivation for the department and um, a lot of great things coming. So good start to the first week for sure for you and and um, good things coming. And then just a consistent reminder of office hours every Thursday. Here at the city of Apopka, city hall from eleven AM to one PM. Um, here to meet with anybody and everybody just to discuss anything that promotes the betterment of Apopka. And if you want to meet anywhere else, you're not comfortable meeting at city hall, totally understand. Just reach out and happy to meet you anywhere and at any time that makes the most sense for you. And that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to say congratulations also to the both of you. Uh, you're fifth day on the job in that role. Uh, we're looking forward to the next forty years. Uh, you fulfilling your role as in those positions that you have been promoted to. Congratulations. Uh, I would like to say that I was able to attend the installation of the consulate for the Mexican consulate um, on last week. Uh, great celebration and uh, so we're glad to have a new consulate as part of our community. That's all I have.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Okay, I had a few. Um, again, congratulations to our new chief of police, Quinn Henry and to uh, his deputy chief Garcia, longtime member of the police department and a friend. So congratulations and well deserved. Uh, so we did that. Uh, I went to the Brownfield Conference and spoke for them for Dr. O and of course, the one that we had over at the the Billy Dean Center. And what was brought up, which was very interesting, was that the Station Street project that I have been asking about for the last year and a half and they kept saying phase two, phase two has been completed and a report is coming. So I look forward to seeing the Station Street project come before us and start moving dirt. Um, of course tomorrow we have, well tomorrow, I'm thinking we're already on Friday. Uh, Saturday, uh, just a reminder, Saturday, November eighth, we have fill the booth with the fire department and that's gonna be at the Kitman Nelson Park from four to nine PM.
I think that's at Fifth Street. You have the police event in the morning from nine to one.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Fifth Street downtown Apopka is from four to nine and then uh, the time for the Kitman Nelson Park is what time is that?
Nine to one.
Nine to one.
Horsepower for heroes.
Oh, okay. The truck pull is that?
No, that's fill the boot.
Oh, my God, I'm totally confused. Okay, so it's an all day event for all of us. We had the strategic planning for for us here on the twenty second, that was a a very good presentation, we enjoyed, I'm hoping to get, you know, the feedback after that. I'm not going to mention this one yet, that one, that one. Okay, the question was I got, I did get the email regarding the notice of default with Main Street and they had, my understanding, they had forty five days in which to respond. When I calculated that, that would have been October fourteenth, did we get a response from them?
No, the notice of default was just sent, so it's forty five days from the time they received the letter.
Oh, okay, you know what I did? I read it at September twenty ninth, it was just October twenty ninth.
Yes.
Okay, so that what would be the deadline for them to respond because thirty days from here is November twenty ninth, then fifteen days would be?
It was like middle December.
December fourteenth, okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just kind of echoing everyone's, congratulations to our new chief and also congratulations to our new deputy chief, welcome and we're excited to have you in that position and actually have nothing.
Cool, all right. Bradley?
Good afternoon, mayor commissioners, it's the first meeting of the month, so I have the utility meter replacement program update encompassing October now. We did see another percentage decrease from September to October. Our estimated reads are now down to four thousand two hundred seventy eight, we're still making great progress there and on target to hit our twelve percent goal by the end of twenty twenty five. We also have processed one thousand nine hundred thirty eight work orders in the month of October, so I just put a little update of where that trend is looking and our no reads have reduced a total of one thousand four hundred eighty three with October reduction of three thousand three hundred and twelve. So, we're continuing to make great progress across the board. Again, a big thank you to the utility billing team and the utility operations team. Every day they're continuing to dive into this and get us back to a point where we have a low number of estimated billings.
Can I ask this quick question on that part component of this? The so once the meters are fixed, whether it's the flexnet, the meter or both, we get a some kind of reading from there and then that's charged back, inaccurate reading is charged back to that resident. That charge back is that based on, which rate is that based on?
So I'll let Blanch come back up and talk talk to that on the detail.
When we back bill, we try to build them at the lowest rate that is in effect.
So it's the current rate though?
Yeah, the lowest rate that's in effect.
Lowest current rate. Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Before you leave, and these meters that have been replaced in the back billing is for the entire city, is that correct?
Well, it's throughout the city.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And and the four thousand county residents?
Oh, yeah, everyone.
Well, I mean, they imply that it was only to?
It's throughout our our customer base.
Yes.
And one of the items we actually brought last council meeting was the approval of the agreement with Orange County to utilize one of their towers to put the new base station. What I asked our GIS team to do was to map the the existing stations and include the new stations being added. That new station's planned for install the week of November seventeenth. It is the OC West Tower Station right there. The various radius circles that you see there are two miles for the white, three miles for the red and four miles for the pink or magenta. Obviously, as you go further away from a radio tower, the signal reliability can be impacted, so the way Census or contractor kind of explained it, you have your absolute best in that two mile, you have your really good in your three mile and you have your good in the four mile. So, obviously the white area, the the white circles are going to be the best, most reliable reads, but the city coverage area is completely covered by the map with the exception of this section down in this portion of our service boundary, which is not highly developed at the time. So, the plan moving forward is to get the West Tower up and running, continue working on the on the field corrections and the field repairs and determine whether or not an additional tower beyond the four would really make an impact that we're looking for or if the field repairs get us to the point where we're in that eight percent range reliability, five to eight percent range reliability. We are also scheduling a demo with Census for what they call a mobile base station. This is a tool that our meter reader could utilize and right now we do have a, he does have a smaller handheld system that he can drive through the neighborhoods to try and collect reads, but the range of that is is relatively limited. The mobile base station, he can drive in the vehicle and collect a two mile radius reliably and this will just be something that'll allow us to instead of doing meter by meter reads, if we have meters that do need a read that are having a communication issue maybe with the tower, we can still capture that data in a very efficient way with the meter reader running through the routes to gather that data while we're making a repair on the communication issue. So we're scheduling a demo, hope to have that demo here in December would be the goal and see if that's a a tool that's we're ready to add to the tool belt.
So that'll do a two mile radius help from the hub wherever that vehicle is at that time?
Correct.
And pretty much anything within that will get the automatic updates?
Correct, and it'll tell us whether they're receiving the data or if there's a an issue where an address is not communicated.
And then that will?
So I can help us also.
Flexnet, is it whatever?
It'll help us, it won't tell us exactly, but it'll say we need, it'll identify that we need to go check out this this address.
Understood.
And create a work order.
And so is it that blue dotted line, that's our service area?
Correct, the blue, the blue line is the current service area for for our water utilities. So usually we we do have, we do have coverage with the towers, oh, in addition to Lent Road Tower is an older tower, reaching kind of end of life. We are looking to replace that tower, we're working with Census right now to get an updated quote and get that ordered and that will also help us increase our reliability in that area with the newer technology. But just thought it'd be good to kind of show a visual of how the tower system works and and what our kind of coverage area looks like. So, again, the biggest push right now is to get the field operations, get all the field maintenance issues corrected, then assess and see if if additional coverage would be a beneficial route to invest in.
Thank you Bradley, appreciate that.
Okay, and oh, and then just two quick other things, our planning team asked me to share that the NOAA CATS, which is an Orange County planning, planning function on the roadways and streets throughout the county, they're going to have a public meeting for Apopka on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty six. The planned location is Apopka Community Center. The time is TBD, but typically these happen in the evenings, so typically around the five thirty to seven thirty time period. The public meeting for the Zellwood area will be Wednesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty six at the Zellwood Community Center and same thing, the times to be determined, but as soon as those flyers are prepared and and times are confirmed, I'll share that with you.
Thank you Bradley. Cliff?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, I feel left out, so I'm going to give him his own copy. I'm here to take up the next thirty minutes of your time so we can get right to the CRI meeting. Actually, what I want to do is talk to you about our friends in Tallahassee putting requirements on us again, yet again, that we have to follow and I wanted to give you a heads up of what's coming because you might get some pushback from residents who don't understand that it is a requirement, not a not not an option, and that ordinance is going to come to you in the next couple of months because it has to be adopted. It's not whether we get a choice or not, we have to adopt one by January first, twenty twenty six. This came to our attention and we notified all our cities and towns of its requirement. Many didn't, weren't even aware, even though their planning departments are pretty keyed in. And this first one is called a certified recovery residence. I encourage you guys to look at the statute, that's why I gave you the memo, it's three ninety seven point four eighty seven. By January first of next year, city council must adopt an ordinance establishing procedures for review and approval of a certified of certified recovery residences within the jurisdiction. Essentially, this means that recovery centers, which are places where drug addicts and or recovering alcoholics can go for residential treatment, meaning in your neighborhood, and they are not permitted to be treated differently than any other residential use for purposes of zoning permitting or any of that other stuff. So as long as your rules comply with federal, state fair housing and ADA, you don't get a say in whether it gets to be in your neighborhood or your next door neighbor. Land use zoning building codes that are used to ban restrict or unduly restrict recovery residences are actionable and not permitted. And so as the summary here on this first page kind of goes through some of the stuff that we will be crafting into the ordinance, which I will repeat, we are doing for every other city and town because they're required to have it and so were the other city who is paying attention to this piece of legislation. The argument in favor of it is that since it has been determined that addiction, whether it be to alcohol or drugs, is a disease, then to treat these folks differently because they have a disease would be the same as discriminating against anybody on the basis of ADA and that is why they have taken your ability to say that those kinds of residences are different than the kind that you and I go and live in every day and said that they're permitted to be in that setting. Their findings are that the recovery rate for those people who suffer from these conditions in a residential setting is greater than those that are more institutionalized like a hospital or treatment center and so forth. So, that's the basis for it and I didn't want it to take you by surprise. I also wanted you to have the opportunity before you presented with the ordinance to know what's coming and be able to answer constituents' questions as to why your hands are tied and to encourage anybody who doesn't like this idea, as I would, to reach out to your local legislative delegation and tell them, why are you doing this and keeping us from ability to locally control local issues? But nevertheless, that's me grandstanding, so I'll be quiet about that. But while I have you on this topic, there are a couple of others which you haven't been presented with and interestingly will not be presented with. One of which has been on the books for a very long time and it so far has not raised its head here as far as I'm aware. It is called a community residential home. It's different than the thing you're going to have an ordinance about and it's covered by four nineteen zero zero one and if it's seven or more, seven to fourteen unrelated residents in the same place, there are some procedures you can have in place. But if it's six residents or less, more or less, they can put this facility in your neighborhood and it is applicable to people who are in the juvenile justice system, people who have been, kids who have been declared dependent, meaning they come from abusive families and the only thing you can determine is whether the building that's there is a single family residence and they're in it. They don't have to be related to another and and other things of that nature. There's an exception, if you have one of those six or under places within a thousand feet of another, six or under residents, but that's basically it. There is the ability, if someone in one of those facilities is known to you, to present an unusual threat to to property. And the example that comes to mind, although I don't know how in the world you'd know this, but if someone was a pyromaniac and had a record of burning things down that presented a potentially unreasonable risk to the neighborhood and going out and starting fires, you you'd be able to say something, but short of that, yeah, no. And then the last one on this little thing is the family daycare homes, I'm sure you're all aware that family daycare can be your neighbor if it chooses to and you don't have a say about that one either, as long as they're validly licensed. And so why am I telling you all this? Well, first, obviously the ordinance that's coming up and I wanted you to be aware of it and be prepared to pass it even if it makes you cringe. And secondarily, to again reiterate to you, this is just but one example of the things happening in Tallahassee which ties your hands and if you think I'm kidding, wait till you see what comes out of property taxes this session, so that's it for me.
Does this affect the communities that are restricted, deed restricted?
It affects them only insofar as if they were to not comply with a deed restriction, but the deed restriction to the extent it it was contrary to law, the law would trump. So, for example, if you had a deed restriction and their laws changed on this in Florida, it used to be you couldn't have a flagpole, then we passed a statute that said you can have a flagpole, particularly if it's an American flag and so forth. And so, but there are restrictions for neighborhoods on certain things like paint colors and so forth, those restrictions in your neighborhood would apply, but the people who, but buying it and occupying it as one of these uses, no.
That's interesting.
Well, thanks for all that good news there Cliff, appreciate that. All right, mayor's report, God, it's got a lot of, a lot of things coming up here this next couple of weeks. First of all, tomorrow night, November sixth, five thirty PM at Highland Manor, we've got the John Land Gala, which you know is in honor of former mayor Land and it's a way to raise money for a lot of different clubs and programs in the Apopka area, so it's a great opportunity for us to to give back to our community. So, John Land Gala tomorrow night at Highland Manor, five thirty. Friday morning, seven thirty, bright and early, got continental breakfast, come on down to the community center and I'll be giving the state of the city. Our program will start at eight, should be have you out there right at nine, just to keep keep you posted on things that we've accomplished this year. Next up on Saturday, November the eighth, which Commissioner Blaskis talked about, it's the APD Horsepower for Heroes Car Show, so come on out, that's from nine to one PM, Kitland Nelson Park. Then that evening, fire department is putting on the Fill the Boot fundraiser. I know that Matt Morgan, who I I asked to be the emcee for the event, he was on Monsters of the Midday today to talk about the event, so that's Saturday, four to nine PM at Fifth Street, so we get, how many teams chief? Fifteen teams going to be pulling big fire trucks around and see who can who can pull it the fastest, so should be a great time, come on out and support Phil in in his recovery. Next up, our VFW Veterans Day Service at Kitland Nelson Park is November the eleventh at eleven AM, Kitland Nelson Park, come on out and be a part of that. And then last, on November fifteenth, is Apopka Recycles Day, this will be at Edward's Field from nine AM to noon, so come on out, if you've got recyclables, we will take care of those for you. And with that, we'll?